Mayor.
Hello, everyone. Are we having, we're having some technical issues? Can you hear me okay?
I should tell everybody.
Yes, Mayor. I would also at the beginning of the meeting point out that there's a discrepancy in the passwords. It's listed as Utica, which is correct at one point. And there's a numeral in another point of the agenda. I would just make it a point to announce for open meetings that purposes that Utica is the correct password.
Will do. We, I'm just making sure I give everyone time to log on, all council members.
All right. Oh, here we go. I had to re-select a button. Okay.
Does that make you Florence Townsend, former mayor?
I'll never tell. I feel like I'm Alice.
Can everybody, or does anybody not have good audio right now? I'm just making sure because we had some issues before I could start the call. How about Linda? Can you hear me okay, Linda?
I do.
Okay, great. And Phil, can you check on the broadcast? Make sure we've got good audio going to cable. I will talk for a second. All right. Treasurer's giving me the thumbs up, so let's go ahead and start the call. Madam Clerk, please mark the call, or the meeting began at 7:34 PM. Councilwoman Townsend, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh. And caught me off guard there. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
threw me off. Put on the spot there. I'm already a little, you know, jazzed up here. I'm trying to get myself together. Hopefully I still.
Well, your first meeting, I thought you deserved the honor to.
Well, that would have been great, but a heads up would have been nice, too.
Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Sikora.
Here.
Terrencey. O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In the packet, council members, were the minutes of the January 12th meeting. Are there any corrections or comments? If not, I would.
Make a motion to approve the.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. On the agenda tonight, we do have a public hearing scheduled for 8:00 PM to discuss the CDBG fund allocations and distributions. So we will have to have a motion to break away for that public hearing at 8 o'clock. Also, just so everyone knows, we do have a very full agenda tonight, including a presentation from the Michigan State University Extension Program. So I'm gonna do my best to keep things moving. If not, this meeting could go quite a while. Are there, at this point in the meeting, we open up for public comments for any items that are listed on the agenda? Does anyone from the public have any comments? Yes, I see Ms. Smale. You are muted. You can unmute.
Okay. I was just waiting. Go ahead. My name's Stacy Smale.
You do have to, you have to state your address and name.
Yep. My name's Stacy Smale. My address is 45273 Brown Al, right in downtown Utica. I'm here, just really quick, I'm not gonna say a lot about it, but I do have a cottage up in Higgins Lake where gypsy moths are a huge problem. I heard that that was on the agenda tonight, and I just saw some posts on social media from community members who are wondering about it, and some people were questioning the spraying, and I encourage council to do whatever they can to get rid of the problem, and if possible, even spraying areas where it's not a problem yet. They're really destructive. They destroy a lot of things. They're, on a personal note, they're pretty gross. They just tend, they build these huge baskets, all come out at the same time, and they're just disgusting. And then, if you don't mind, I'm gonna put in the chat, here is a website. Higgins Lake is located in Roscommon, and they have a whole website just dedicated to it, and there's pictures of what it looks like when they spray, there's pictures of what it looks like when you have the moths there and everything. So, anyway, it's just a really huge problem, and I'm really glad that the city's addressing it, and I hope that you will consider doing whatever you can to get rid of the problem. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smale. Is there anyone else from the public that has comments about any item that is listed on the agenda? I'm looking. If you are trying to comment, make sure that you're not on mute. Okay. I'm gonna record that that was all the public comments we had for items on the agenda and move forward. Next item is unfinished business. The one item of unfinished business was the flower basket for 2021 request. Council members, you'll notice that a new thing that we've instituted is the Agenda Item Summary. So if you look through your packet, you'll find that form filled out with all the pertinent information. Where we were at on the flower baskets at this point was, at the council meeting in October, October 13th, we approved purchasing the flowers at a cost not to exceed $9,000. Since then, we have, or this month, very recently, we received the estimate from Kutchian Sons for $3,585 to purchase the flowers. That $9,000 is also, needs to include any cost for watering of the flowers. So I guess what we need at this point is two motions. One to approve the estimate from Kutchian Family Farms, and another motion to amend the budget for the flowers and water for $9,000. And that would come from the Street Department funds. That would also leave us with $5,410 to pay any water that we decided we were gonna hire. That's obviously another item that we need to discuss and figure out at some point. Are there any questions about what this agenda item is about?
Nope.
At this point, we would need a motion to approve the estimate from Kutchian Farms.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the invoice, or pay the invoices, or the estimate from Kutchian Farms as presented. I'll support that.
Okay.
Okay, that was a motion by Deanne, support by O'Donnell. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussions about the motion for the estimate of $3,585? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. We would also need a motion to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget. $9,000, Street Department funds. Do we have a motion?
移到
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Terrencey. Any discussion?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilman, support.
Do we really want to amend the budget for the full amount before we decide how we're going to pick the person to water the flowers? Because that's telling them that there's, I would like to see, put it out and let people put a bid in. We started this watering cost at $2,000 back when. So I'd like to open up first to residents, and they have to be able to meet the criteria of what days they're gonna water it. I don't care when they do it. They could still use the gator, just like the current person has. But I would rather see amended budget for the cost of the flowers. And then, once we get a bid, shall we say, from whoever we pick, then we can amend it for the rest, because if not, it's an automatic $5,400 that somebody's gonna say, "I want for watering the flowers." That's all.
Any other discussion? Councilman Deanne, go ahead. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Terrencey.
You know what? What Ken is saying is making sense, that we should just make the amendment for what we know we're gonna spend right now, and then wait until, you know, we know exactly how much it's going to cost us, and we may not need a full amount for the beginning, because the flowers get watered from, you know, May until September, and that gives us two months. We would only need two months amendment for this year. So I agree with Councilman Sikora that we should just, you know, right now amend the flower amount of $3,590.
Councilman Deanne, I believe you made the original motion. Would you agree to withdraw that motion and amend it for a budget amendment of $3,590?
I will be willing to do that. That's completely fine.
And Councilwoman Terrencey, would you, your support continue? Okay. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan. Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. All right. Moving along in the agenda, next is consent business, of which we have none. Next correspondence, also none. And that moves us to gypsy moth suppression. We have a guest, Ms. Terry Gibb, from the Michigan State University Extension Program. We have 15 minutes until our public hearing, Ms. Gibb. Is that adequate time for you to cover what you need to?
I can talk very fast. Linda knows.
Then you have the floor. Thank you.
Okay, real briefly, I'm an extension educator based in Macomb County, and I actually have been administering this program since the county started the program back in 1992. So I've been at it since the beginning here. So, anyway, real quickly, I'll give you a little bit of background about gypsy moth, what the program entails. Do you have some idea what you're gonna be talking about, and that? And then specifically, what the issue is in Utica, okay? Gypsy moth is a foreign pest that has few predators that can keep it in check. We first found it in Michigan in 1954, and outbreaks started occurring on a regular basis in the mid-'80s. The gypsy moth caterpillar feeds on the tree leaves, preferring those of oak, acorn, poplar, and birch, but it will feed on 500 different tree types, depending on what's out there, including evergreens. And large populations can defoliate entire wooded areas. And caterpillars in large numbers, and their waste, which is also called the brass, are a nuisance to residential areas in big time. Now, just to make really clear, gypsy moth cannot be eradicated. The goal of the program is to suppress it down to tolerable levels, so that we don't lose, of our 12 weeks of summer, we don't lose six of it to gypsy moth. So, okay, gypsy moth caterpillars do not cause premature leaf browning or curling of leaves. They do not make webs or tents in trees. And in addition to the damage to the trees, gypsy moth caterpillars can be a real nuisance if the populations are high enough. Caterpillars and their brass can drop down from trees onto sidewalks, driveways, yards, corridors, and vehicles. The hairs on the caterpillars can cause irritation or an allergic reaction if it comes in contact with their skin. And the brass can actually stain surfaces, particularly if it gets wet. Then, tree defoliation by the caterpillar is another issue with this pest, and can have a significant negative impact on tree health. If trees are defoliated more than 40% in a season, and it's early enough in the season, they will re-leaf a second time. But what that does is that re-leaf uses the winter energy that it's saving to make it overwinter, and so it weakens the tree. So I would tell you, gypsy moth does not kill trees. What it does is it weakens the trees so that other predators can attack it, and that's what kills it. So you just kinda haven't, have an idea. What we use to control this, it's an aerial spray, and we use a product called BT. It's the Phyllis Ferengensis var. cattarski, also known as BTK. This has been used for gypsy moth control in northeast United States where it started, since 1961, and in Michigan since 1985. It is a naturally occurring bacteria found in soil. It's commonly used in organic farming. And just as a show of hand, when you were a kid, did any of you eat dirt either on accident or on purpose? If you did.
Probably.
Okay? You ate BT, and you all survived, right?
Can explain a lot of things.
I wasn't gonna say that. BT specifically targets only caterpillars of a certain size. So it is applied when the caterpillars are in what we call the third instar, that they have instar stages of growth. You have to get it right at the third instar, because at that point, they're big enough to be climbing up into the trees to feed on the leaves, and yet they're still small enough, because once they get to about the fifth instar, the BT won't impact them. It won't kill them. So, so if we wanna have, it's within a very, very tight timeline, and it's based on the size of the caterpillar and weather conditions. In addition, BT will not, let me see, will not harm humans, pets, birds, fish, butterflies, lions, beneficial insects, or even other moths. It is very, very, very target specific. There are some alternative methods that we educate residents about, that if they can reach them, they can deal with them. And so the program really is a combined effort of what residents and communities can do in addition to a spray. All right, now, Utica, let me first say, Utica, we surveyed Utica back in late fall because we got a call from a resident, and I understand, Mayor, that you also got some calls about it.
That's true.
And we ended up finding, how we do it is, we go out and we survey, and using M-DART thresholds of so many, you have to have so many live viable egg masts in a specific period, you know, area. That's how they're gonna, below the threshold, threshold, we don't spray it, but it's above the threshold, we do. Or we can. So anyway, so we did it. We found that Utica has one spray block of 98 acres in the Grant Park neighborhood. Right now, the estimate that we are using for communities to be able to determine if they're gonna participate in the program is $145 per acre. Now, I would tell you right now, the applicator is absolutely sure it's gonna be less than that if all the other communities join. If all the communities join, we looked at the number of acres, we told him, and we've got over 2,100 acres in Macomb County alone this year. That's double what we've ever had, ever, in any other year. So based on that, it will be down a few dollars. It's not gonna drop drastically, but still, that $145 is $23 acre less than what the community paid last year. So basically, $145 times 98 acres is $14,210. We currently have spray blocks in 10 other communities, as well as two HCMA parks. How this program's gonna work, it's gonna be, actually, we're going back. We sprayed in 19 and 20. Prior to that, we didn't spray 2009. We had 10 years where nobody had to worry about this. Well, now it's hit with the vengeance, and not just here. Somebody mentioned Higgins Lake and Roscommon. Roscommon, because a colleague at MSU also heads up that program, and there's three counties, Roscommon and two others, and they went from 10,000 acres last year to over 26,000 acres they're spraying this year. It's exploded all over the state. It's not just in any one place. It's just the perfect storm has come together. So how this program is gonna work, issue, we're going back to the way we did it prior to 2009. If you vote to participate in the program, you will sign a letter of agreement with the county to participate in the program and pay your amount of spray cost, the $14,000. And then, what will happen is the county will then enter into an agreement with the applicator on behalf of all of the communities. Last two years, every community had their own contract with the applicator. But because there's so many communities this year, we went from four last year to 10 plus HCMA this year. So what's gonna happen is, if you decide to be in it, you'll do the letter of intent. Your check will come to us, Michigan State, you'll deposit it into our gypsy moth account that we have at the county. Everybody will do the same thing. The county will hold the contract with the applicator. Once everything is done, and we've said yes, everything is done, it's fine, it's good, then the county will write the check and pay the applicant. So that's kind of basically how it's going to work. So, okay, I'm open for questions. I did that really quickly.
Terry, this is Mayor Calendino. I know in our conversations, you mentioned that the actual spraying would take place sometime in May. Is that still accurate?
Yes, yes. We, oh, I guess I probably should tell you, one thing is the letters of agreement. We get your money in. The county digitizes the maps for us. They take the information we give them, they digitize the map, that goes to the applicator. We download it into his computer on his plane, and that's how we know is the areas to spray.
Okay.
And then, we then, after that, in addition, when they digitize those maps, they also give me, give us the addresses of every resident in that spray block. So we then, we then send out a letter notifying them that they're gonna be sprayed, what's gonna be used, you know. We can't give them, based on what I told you about determining the date of the spray. Last year, I will tell you, I was up at 5 o'clock for five days straight, talking to the applicator. "Okay, are we gonna go today?" "No, we're not ready." "Are we gonna go today?" "No, we're not ready." "Are we gonna go today?" Until we got to, weather conditions being perfect, and the caterpillar's the right size. So it's, we try to give you as much notice, but we will tell them it's gonna be in May, expect a plane low-flying over the house, you know. Stay indoors for, you know, give it an hour. We spray at first light, partly because humidity is, humidity is at the right percentage, wind is usually pretty low at that time, you know, temperature is good, there's nobody outside. So we can, you know, it just, it just really works. I mean, I was in the spray block at border to six last year. You know, checking out to make sure everything is good, so that's, and we will spray in May. It can be any, any time from like the second week in May. I think we sprayed, it was probably really late in May last year. It was after Memorial Day weekend. It's a guess. When we spray, it all depends on conditions.
Do any council members have any questions for Ms. Gibb?
Do we know which communities surrounding us are also participating in this? Or do we not have any commitment from any other surrounding areas?
Verbally, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback. I will tell you, right off the top of my head, every community from Warren to Bruce has got acreage, all the way up the west side of our border, of our county border. In addition to that, Richmond Township is new this year. We have acreage in Gray Township. I'm trying to think where else, off the top of my head. Well, there's a lot of them. Just like I said, just, you know, you are surrounded. You are surrounded, and unfortunately, you've been pretty lucky, because Shelby has been sprayed almost every year we've had a vote. Almost every year. So you've been lucky, because you're right there and are, you know, surrounded by them, and you haven't been hit with it yet. So.
Any other questions?
Can I make one more comment?
Absolutely.
Just, I'll just, I'll just let you know, I sent the information to your, to your, you know, city offices that we are doing an educational webinar on February 23rd, from 1 to 2. And again, this is focused, originally, it was focused on Macomb County local officials and residents, to educate them, because, you know, they need to know what's going on. Otherwise, we will get videos saying that they're going to crash, or the Russians are bombing us, or they're spraying with some kind of toxic chemical. We had that in 2019, that's why I'm saying. But, so we try to, we're gonna try to educate them. And then after I heard that this thing exploded all over the state, this is now a statewide webinar that we're doing. So if you, it's free to get on, you just need to register. And if you wanna share that with your residents, we've already got almost 130 people registered. So, and we can do like 500.
All right. Well, if there's no further questions, we.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Ms. Gibb, this may be a silly question, but how do you do it?
How do we do what?
How is the spraying done?
Okay, the spray is done, it's an aerial spray. And so what happens is, you can use either planes or helicopters, just depending on, you know, who your applicator is. And they, like I said, they have the digitized map, they put in, it tells them when to turn on the spray, when to turn off. It's like, it's just like spraying for, in agriculture, where they'll spray large areas. Same thing exactly. They fly right over the treetops, so they get it right where it needs to go, and that's why you don't want it to be windy. You want it to drop right down. The BT is in a sticky substance, so that it sticks to the, sticks to the leaves, so that when the caterpillars go up to eat, it's right there for them to tomp on. Thank you. Problem.
Any further questions? Well, we're one minute away from our public hearing time. I think I would like to delay our making a motion or voting on this until after the public hearing. Ms. Gibb, you're definitely welcome to stay with us in case there may be some questions after we get through our public hearing, when we get to the motion part.
Sounds good.
So I am showing exactly 8 o'clock. I would need a motion to enter into the public hearing.
移到
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Deanne. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
All right. Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. And of course, I'm having trouble finding it in my packet. In everybody's packet was the information for. For the CDBG allocations this year. Let me get to my packet here. So the money we have to distribute this year, if I'm reading this correctly, is $2,840. We also have in our packet a listing of organizations that have asked for us to consider them for allocation. In addition, we also have a letter from our own beloved public library, asking for contribution. In years past, I know what we have done is granted the library what they were requesting, and then divided what remained amongst the other organizations. Do I have, so what, do we have any of the folks from any of these organizations present? I know Ms. Daigee is present. Would you like to speak on your request first, Ms. Daigee? I think you're muted.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Once again, the library, thank you all. Once again, the library is asking for $600, which we use for. Once again, the library is asking for six hundred dollars, which we use for large print books. Uh, large print books, uh, are, have become increasingly popular. Um, I, in fact, since we've been getting this grant from y'all, from C D G B, I've just noticed a great increase in the number of people using them. And I know that's obviously because we're able to afford more choices for them and, uh, the circulation that goes out on them. So, uh, large print books are more expensive than regular books. Uh, regular books, we get a, a pretty substantial discount from our distributor. That's not the case for large print books. They're bigger, they're heavier, they have, you know, more pages, there's the enlarged print. And even though we always classify this as a request for seniors like myself, which it is, um, it also, I, I do remind you that people can have vision problems at any age. So a large print book, though, is considered a, a purchase for our senior population. It is really for everybody, um, because you don't have to be a senior to have difficulty reading print on a book. So if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer, but, um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Daighy.
Thank you.
Do we have any members? Well, go ahead, Councilwoman Terrencey, please.
Ms. Daighy, you know that my heart is with the library. Is this really, do you, I mean, is this enough money or, or would you really have liked a little bit more?
Well, I always want more money, you know, uh, but this is, this is, there are other organizations that I know have great need. We are one of them. Um, I, I am happy with this amount, um, and, and satisfied. It does, it really does enable us to enlarge our collection more than I anticipated it would. Thank you, Ms. Terrencey.
How many books approximately do you think that you will be able to get with the large print?
Um, we can get about five books per hundred, so that's going to give us, yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any further questions for Ms. Daighy? Okay. I'm looking through the list. Are there any other members from different organizations that would like to speak at this point?
Uh, this is Dick Rosenberg.
Hello, sir.
How are you this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Very well, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members, uh, of the board. Uh, my name is Dick Rosenberg. Uh, I live at eight seven six zero North Duchess, and that's in Bruce Township. Uh, I'm here tonight representing the Samaritan House for a request for the funds. Um, Samaritan House is a food pantry that is, uh, serving the northwest corner of Macomb County. So we include Bruce Township, Washington Township, Shelby Township. And then to the east, uh, we have, uh, Armada, Ray, and just a small portion of Macomb. And so this is our twenty-sixth year. Uh, it is a collection of about nineteen churches right now. And we provide supplemental food for the low income and very low income segment of our community. Um, to indicate, uh, in a given month, we'll serve between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty families, something like two hundred to three hundred individuals. We also serve supplemental food to, uh, thirty-one different, uh, shut-ins at this point in time. So it's, um, been in business, this is our twenty-sixth year. And I think this is probably the first year that we've approached, uh, the village or the city of Utica, uh, with a request. Historically, we've kind of drawn a boundary at twenty-three mile road, um, for the fear of, of not being able to serve the larger population to the south of Shelby Township. But as part of the pandemic, we started serving that area. We simply said, we'll take anybody that fits into that general area. And so we're trying to develop some relationships with some churches in the area to help support us. So it's very much a volunteer organization. Um, we have, uh, typically fifty to seventy-five different volunteers every month. And they'll contribute something on the order of seven hundred and fifty hours per month to receive the food, uh, that comes in from the various locations and the drives that we have within churches and schools and so on. So I don't know how many are familiar with our, with our activity, but, uh, we are fairly broad in, in our reach. So, um, we've got before you this evening a request for, I think it's, uh, a thousand dollars. I realize that there are very limited, uh, funds, so, um, it, it's just to reach out to basically indicate to you that we're in the area and we're intending to expand a little bit and wanted to introduce the organization to you. So, uh, with that, uh, I'm open for any questions or any further additional information I can provide.
Does anyone on council have a question for Mr. Rosenberg? Councilman Sakura.
Um, you had mentioned, sir, that you mentioned all the communities north of us, but not us as far as members or community serving. You did not include Utica. I know you're saying you're wishing to add to it. Um, would Utica then be part of it if we give you funds?
Right, I don't know that we can segregate at this point. I'm with our records, the city of Utica from Shelby. So I, I know we served about sixty families in Shelby Township last year. As to whether or not the city is included in that area.
There, there's my point. You said your boundary is twenty-three mile road. We're basically two and a half miles.
No, 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 it has, it, it has historically been twenty-three mile road because of the larger population in the south of Shelby Township. And so we've decided to extend that down now to the lower boundary, which is Hall Road, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly true.
Any other questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
Okay, I have a comment. Mr. Rosenberg, I do have a friend who volunteered at your organization for years and years. And, you know, I, I heard how wonderful it is and all the people that you serve. So thank you so much for what you've done.
Yes, well, thank you. And, you, you know, my view is that, um, the charity is kind of a two-way street. You're thankful for what you get, but the act of giving and the act of, of working on things and distributing that, uh, um, service i- is fulfilling for the individual.
Okay, if there's no further questions for Mr. Rosenberg, is there any other organizations represented tonight?
Hi, yes, um, my name is Heather Topic. I am a children's therapist at Turning Point. I am here as a representative for our shelter program to request one thousand in community block grant money from Utica or, of course, any little bit counts, um, because I know your funds are limited, um, to assist in the provision of shelter services for survivors and their families of domestic and sexual violence from Utica. Turning Point has been part of the community for over forty years. We are a domestic and sexual violence support organization located inside of Macomb County. Turning Point Shelter provides emergency shelter to Utica residents fleeing violence in their homes. In the twenty-twenty fiscal year, Turning Point provided nine hundred and thirty-nine shelter bed nights to nineteen survivors, including thirteen children. We provided shelter, basic needs. Some examples of this includes, um, clothing, diapers, formula, um, personal needs like toiletries. Um, we provide meals to the residents as well. Um, we provide crisis intervention, case management services, children supportive services and advocacy, program advocacy and support groups. In addition to shelter, Turning Point provided the following services to Utica res, uh, Utica residents. Seven individuals received help with P P O filings. Six people received counseling and advocacy services. One Utica survivor received a forensic nurse exam following a sexual assault. One Utica survivor received crisis intervention, information and referrals from our first response team following an assault. And ten Utica callers received assistance through Turning Point's twenty-four hour crisis line. Even during COVID, we are offering a comprehensive array of services, and all of our services are always free to survivors. We have a twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five day, uh, crisis hotline. We have emergency shelter. We have home-based community housing advocacy for residents leaving shelter. We have individual and group counseling for both adults and children. We have assistance with filing personal protection orders. We offer forensic nurse exams to survivors of sexual assault. Um, this also includes, um, those who have been strangled as well. We do strangulation exams. We offer legal advocacy and assistance with filing personal protection orders. We have prevention education that goes into the schools. And then Turning Point also has Secondhand Rose, which is a, um, resale store. And we provide all clothing and stuff to our survivors for free, but then the community can also shop the thrift store as well. Um, instead of asking for funding support, I would rather be here to inform you that there is no longer violence within the homes of residents in Utica. Unfortunately, Turning Point's twenty-four hour crisis line and the fact that our shelter is full most of the time demonstrates that family violence continues and contributes to homelessness and that our services are greatly needed. Turning Point's commitment to ending domestic and sexual violence cannot happen without the support of the community. Please help us maintain this crucial and viable service by supporting the continuation of grant funding. If awarded the one thousand dollars requested of Utica, Turning Point will be able to provide approximately thirty nights of shelter to those who identify themselves as Utica residents. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak in front of your council. Um, does anybody have any questions right now?
Where, where is the actual nearest shelter located, uh?
Our shelter is located in Mount Clemens, um, but due to the nature, um, because we are a safe house, we cannot provide the exact address or location. Um, but we do have other, um, counseling offices, um, as well. So we have St. Clair Shores, Warren, um, Mount Clemens. Um, I believe they have one in like the Utica Shelby area, um, but right now, a lot of the sessions are virtual unless they're inside the shelter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions for Ms. Topic? Thank you, Ms. Topic.
Thank you.
Are there any other representatives tonight from other organizations? I see Carehouse down there.
I know. I was waiting for Scott because he had his hand raised before him.
Ms. Dory, go right ahead.
(laughing) Good evening, everyone. My name is Dory Bassis Nolan, and I'm the executive director of Carehouse in Macomb County Child Advocacy Center. Uh, we have our main office located in Mount Clemens, and we also have a satellite office in the city of Warren. Carehouse is the only agency in Macomb County providing a comprehensive intervention, advocacy and treatment response for child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, and for children who may have been a witness to a violent act, as well as their non-offending family members. Our goal is to minimize the trauma that is typically associated with child abuse investigations and to support the child victim and their family through the prosecution, uh, phase and, um, and offer them the support to begin the healing process. We're one of over eight hundred, uh, fully accredited children's advocacy centers in the United States and one of about thirty-five accredited in the state of Michigan. We collaborate with all law enforcement jurisdictions in, in, uh, Macomb County, as well as the FBI, Homeland Security and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, Children's Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, and mental health and medical professionals. We do know that, um, talking about child sexual abuse is uncomfortable and difficult, but that unfortunately is a big part of the problem. We can't wish away child sexual abuse or pretend that it doesn't exist. And the reality is that one in ten children will become victims of sexual abuse before they turn eighteen. That's almost three kids in every classroom in the state of Michigan. And over twenty thousand of all of the kids right here in Macomb County are living with the trauma of sexual abuse. And we know that these numbers are, um, surely much higher than what is reported because most kids never tell. Living with sexual abuse is a reality for children of every race, gender and socioeconomic status. Most of the parents, or at least the mothers, um, many of them that come to Carehouse with their children, um, will disclose that they were victims of sexual abuse when they were kids too, um, but never told anyone, um, and never got any help, um, for the trauma that they suffered. And when this disclosure from their child comes about, um, it triggers their trauma all over again. So Carehouse can work with all non-offending family members as a whole to promote healing for the whole family. And after a forensic interview, Carehouse offers follow-up services, uh, for the child victims and their families, intervening to promote healing and helping them to cope with all of the emotions that come with this disclosure of sexual abuse, including guilt, disbelief, fear and anger. Uh, our follow-up services include crisis counseling, child safety assessment, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, family advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations, which is, uh, provided by Turning Point's, um, same nurse program, a family pantry with cleaning supplies, baby items, P P E's, school supplies, et cetera. We offer holiday assistance, um, for families that we see, um, are struggling during that time of the year. Um, we can offer referrals and help, um, to connect them with other needed community services. And we're also the designated local council in Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, um, offering child abuse prevention, information and training for professionals who work with children and to the community at large. Families are never charged for any of the services that they receive at Carehouse, and we serve them as long as they need us, even if they stop and then need to come back again. I'm also very proud to report that according to our most recent independent financial audit, over eighty-eight cents of every dollar that comes to Carehouse is specifically devoted to serving children and families in our community. Since we opened in nineteen ninety-six, we've conducted over eighty-six hundred forensic interviews, and fifty-four of those children were residents of Utica. Um, in two thousand nineteen, we conducted seven hundred and fifty-seven forensic interviews, and four of those children were residents of Utica. And last year, we did six hundred and sixty-four forensic interviews with one child being a resident of Utica. Uh, we were very grateful for the five hundred and sixty-five dollars that we received last year, which helped us, uh, support services for one family. Uh, twenty twenty was definitely a challenging year for Carehouse, um, as it was for everyone. We also noticed that, um, that it was very, uh, hard on the families that we serve. Um, we, uh, at Carehouse had to cancel two fundraisers last year, which is kind of tough. But we've also seen a greater demand for our services and an increase in unexpected expenses as we've implemented policies and, uh, practices to protect our staff and the families that we serve. We, um, are entering our twenty-fifth anniversary this year, and, uh, we know that we wouldn't be here without the support of the community to provide a voice for child victims and a safe place for them to be heard. We're so grateful for the longstanding support that we've received from the city of Utica. And this year, we respectfully request your consideration for funding in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars, which would help support services for two child victims and their families who were qualified residents of the city of Utica. But of course, we would be grateful for any, uh, allocation you might be able to send our way. Our website is W W W dot M C Carehouse dot org. And we have, um, a Facebook page that we would love for you to, to visit and to follow. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
You know, the real shame here, Mr. Mayor, is that all these people do such great works and we only have such a limited number of funds to spread it around. I mean, but, you know, each one of our own library that we love and cherish and our, and these people that, um, you know, I'm sure Mrs. Nolan and, um, you know, the other folks here, they, they put this work together. They're not here because they're making a lot of money, they do, they do it because they care about people. And it's really sad that we just don't have more funds. I'm hoping that we can, uh, spread the wealth a little bit to whatever degree we, uh, we have, and we can share something with everyone.
Well, we do have, I believe Mr. Andrews is representing a group, are you not, sir?
That is correct. Um, I'll try to not take up too much of your time. My name is Scott Andrews, and I work for, uh, interfaith volunteer caregivers. Uh, thank you to the mayor and city council members. You know, in these times, um, aside from watching the news, having public servants such as yourselves representing and caring about others, um, is a wonderful thing. Uh, with the number of older adults in Macomb County rapidly increasing, the need for support services due to the frailties of age, chronic health conditions, uh, and disabilities is growing dramatically and will continue to do so well into the future. uh, and disabilities is growing dramatically and will continue to do so well into the future. For 29 years, our organization has been helping older disabled adults with transportation, chores, respite breaks, errands, and loneliness. Uh, in the chat, I just shared our IVC website. The Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers Program um that we are doing through CDBG has been providing chore and repair services on a smaller scale for many years. But we are, in fact, requesting CDBG funding to increase the number of low-income residents we can reach and grow this program. We are confident that the addition of funding through CDBG will allow us to grow these services each year and begin reaching more and more of the struggling individuals in need of the support we can offer. Such help can be very well the difference that allows an older or disabled neighbor to remain safe at home, which is the name of the program. Um, for IVC, we appreciate the partnership we have had with your city the past few years and for actually granting us a CDBG allocation last year. And we hope that you continue to look uh upon our program and organization favorably. I looked through your whole board packet, and I'm well aware that your council has funding requests not only from the library, uh, but other nonprofit groups totaling nearly four times the amount of funding that you have. Um, you have a request from our organization before you. I will respectfully state our request can be lessened to any amount you see fit to grant and share among the other groups. And um you had a presentation in front of you last year from our office. I shared the website. If you know of any seniors who might utilize our services and could use some assistance from um trained, embedded, and certified volunteers, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Uh, any questions? From any councilman? Councilwoman?
My husband's laughing because I have all these comments. "Mr. Andrews, I I once volunteered for Interfaith, but my plate was too full, and I had to back off." You have barely touched on all of the services that you provide. The the services that Interfaith provides is taking people to the grocery store, picking up their medicines. I have a friend who, her and her husband come and do small repairs in people's houses. It is such a vast, vast giving organization that does so much for our seniors, and it's it's a very, very good organization. So thank you for all that you all do.
And and thank you. Yep, each year, usually about 500 seniors um were able to assist just through volunteer help. Um, and I guess in a non-COVID year, uh, usually over 20,000 hours of uh service to these seniors. But um in this case, it's primarily, again, the chores and repairs. Uh, but thank you very much um for uh that acknowledgement. And uh, uh, thank you for keeping your plate full, helping uh where you can.
Oh, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Andrews? Are there any other members from other organizations uh to speak to us tonight? I believe that looks like everybody. I think I, if I remember how we do this, I think we have to exit a public hearing before we can uh consider a motion on how to divide the money. So I would be looking for a motion to exit the public hearing portion and return to the meeting.
So moved, Mr. Mayor?
So moved.
Motion by Dionne, uh, support by Terrencey. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Sakura.
Yes.
Renzi. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Yerkeel Andrino.
Yes. Okay. So I guess we can open the floor to council members uh to discuss how to allocate the... Can I find the number again? What was that number again, uh, Madam Clerk?
Uh, it was $2,840 total.
$2,840. And because I'm doing the Zoom, I can't easily operate a calculator here on my computer. So I'm gonna rely on Mayor Pro Tem Sakura as we do every year.
I have one turned on right now.
I know.
My adding machine.
Um, our library is asking for 600.
That leaves you 2240.
And we have one, two, three, four. It looks like four organizations that are asking uh to be considered here. Does anybody have an idea of how they would like to uh handle this? I know in years past, we've subtracted the library uh request from the total that we have to allocate and then divided the remainder among the other organizations. Is that an acceptable way to do it this year?
Acceptable for me. That would put you that would put you at $560 per group for the remaining four. A group that I'm surprised did not come to us is McRist, because they operate right in our backyard with St. Lawrence and with Trinity. And I'm very surprised they did not come to us this year for because they do the warming stuff and the food and I mean, they're they're, they definitely are an impact in our community, so.
And they're on the list, uh, and they did ask for a considerable amount. They asked for $3,780. Uh, but we we don't have a representative here.
Mayor, I do want to state that just because they don't have a representative here doesn't mean that they can't be considered for any amount that council wishes.
Yep.
If you were to consider McRist and put it at five, that would give everybody $448.
Have they come in the past before? Have they come before us?
Every year, every year. And it's sad to say, this is the smallest amount that I can ever remember that we've had to work with.
Ever. I I agree.
And we've had years, 8,000, 12,000, and now we're under 3,000.
I'm looking at the list right now to see what what other organizations did not have a representative here tonight. Well, I think we uh, in the spirit of keeping the meeting moving here, do we have a motion how to how to divide the money out?
I'll make a motion to include McRist into the group, so we would have a total of five. We then would allocate it at, well, six with the library. Uh, the Utica Library would get $600, and each of the five other groups, Samaritan House, Turning Point, Care House, Interfaith, and Care Care House would uh divvy up to 2240, and we each get $448.
Was that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
I'll support that.
Motion by Sakura, support by Terrencey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Sakura.
Yes.
Renzi.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yan?
He's on mute.
I'm mute.
All right. Yes, thank you.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Yerkeel Andrino?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. And I'd just like to tell all the representatives tonight, thank you for all the good work uh you're doing in our community. As other members of council have said, we're disappointed we don't have mu- more money to give you. Um, but we thank you for all, for the continuing great work you're doing for Utica residents and all residents. So thank you again. You're welcome to stick around and listen to our boring city business. Or, you know, if you want to leave at this point, you know, we completely understand. We know you have a lot of work to do. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Good night to all.
Thank you again, and have a good night.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I bet if we got our own Netflix deal, we could probably make some uh money for the city, get this exciting show on the road.
I'll I'll leave that up to you, uh, Councilman Dionne.
We'll see what happens.
All right, at this point, I would like to return to the Gypsy moth suppression uh agenda item. Uh, thank you, Ms. Gibb, for your excellent information. I think that leaves us at a point. Well, let me open the it up again if there is anyone from council that had any further questions for Ms. Gibb?
How many, excuse me, um, Mr. Mayor, how many acres was Utica involved with?
Um, Ms. Gibb, do you want to answer that or?
Um, I I, well, I I'm interpreting that question, how many acres do you have in your spray block? It's 98.
Yes.
Uh, they they actually, they actually, um,
Nine eight.
I lost my word, but I'm saying.
That was nine eight.
They actually surveyed more than that, but but they found 98. We try to be very conservative, do exactly what needs to be done without going beyond that because we know that this is not an inexpensive program.
Any other questions? So I believe what we need to do at this point is decide if we're going to commit to joining this program with the other surrounding communities. Uh, if you look at your agenda item summary, there would be two motions required. I think we could slightly amend uh the amount in the first motion. We had it at an amount of $17,000, not to exceed $17,000, but that was based on the original estimate we received. Uh, that's been lowered a bit. So I think uh we would be safe to probably make a motion to for well, the number you gave us, Ms. Gibbs, was $14,210. So we probably uh would be safe to go $14,500, not to exceed. If there's no further questions, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion, and based on what Ms. Gibbs said was it probably will come down the more people that do it. Um, I think we can say don't, just make it 14,000. So I'll make a motion uh to enter into the program approximately 98 acres in our spray box uh with a price not to exceed $14,000.
I'll support that, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to say on the agenda item, we did identify the uh what General Ledger, uh, count that would be uh Department of Public Works. And we do have a fu- fun number there. Is there any discussion?
I would just say it's one of those that I don't think that you can't not do it.
Right.
Because it's just getting out of control, and we've been lucky with the communities around us really sheltering us. But once it embeds in us, it's not going away, so.
Right.
Well, it's kind of preventative medicine.
I have only one concern, and it is what if it is higher than 14,000? You know, we're quoted 14,000, what, $210 you just said? And it just makes me a little nervous to be under budgeting and not having enough money to cover it if need be. If need doesn't be, then we don't use it.
Can we always do a budget amendment later for it, or take another vote at it?
We could.
I mean, it it really, it really comes down to about $2 an acre in savings. Okay, bringing it from 14, 210, 14,210 to 14, that'd be saying you'd be spending it at a dollar 43. Um, again, um, we were told that the price should be coming down, period, just because the number of people doing it. So it's it's economies of scale. So I I'm I'm happy with the 14,000. We just won't do face block, that's all.
I think we've missed off. There you go.
There we go.
Even though, I think we do that to clinghammer.
Yeah.
So we did have a motion from Councilman Sakura and a support by Councilman O'Donnell, I believe?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, uh, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please?
Sakura.
Yes.
Renzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Yerkeel Andrino?
Yes.
Oh. It's not me.
Excuse me. Yes.
I think you're paying attention.
Uh, and we would need a second motion since this was coming from general fund balance to make a budget amendment. It is listed on the agenda item summary, item 2B. Would I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to do all that.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Terrencey. Any discussion?
I'll start.
Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please?
Sakura.
Yes.
Renzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Yerkeel Andrino?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Ms. Gibbs, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. We really appreciate it. Uh, we're glad to be able to do this for our residents. I know, like we mentioned, there were several residents that did call with complaints. Uh, I'm sure they'll be glad to know that we're doing our best to help take care of them. If there's, does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Gibb? And as I told the others, you're welcome to stick around for all the excitement. We would understand uh if you decide to depart at this point.
Well, since I have two more of these tomorrow night, I think I will be departing.
Good night, and and thanks again, Ms. Gibb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving along, uh, new business, department reports. I get to go first. I think it was my first week uh as mayor. I had the pleasure of performing uh my first marriage officiation. It was a very pleasant uh thing to do. I was very happy to do it. Uh, however, when I looked at the numbers, I was kind of amazed that the city of Utica actually only gets $10 uh in reimbursement for all the work that our hard-working clerk has to do, uh, including making copies, scheduling, mailing, uh, there's actually quite a bit that goes into it. So currently, our our fees for performing marriages is $35. Of that, the city keeps 10, and I get paid 25, which actually I never got the check, Madam Clerk, so I'll be looking for that uh very soon. I would like to see us raise that a bit to at least cover, you know, the cost to the city. Uh, the numbers I came up with would be uh $75 for residents and $100 for non-residents. My fee, the mayor fee, would stay at 25 for both of those situations, and all the rest would go back to the city to cover costs. So I would be uh looking for a motion to approve raising the marriage officiation fees to $75 for residents and $100 for non-residents.
I think that's reasonable. I would like to support that by making a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion by Dionne.
I'll support.
Support by Sakura. Any uh any discussion on the matter?
Are these fees comparable to other jurisdictions to the county level? Are they comparable as far as what we're going to be changing the fees to?
Um, I looked up in private officiation fees, I saw ranging from like 400 all the way into the thousands. Uh, the lowest I really saw was, uh, I believe, 400. Now, what I heard was the county court, 41A, does uh marriage officiation, but it's a little bit different. You have to show up on a certain day. There's no, it's not personalized. You know, everyone that's wishing to be married shows up and gets in line. Uh, and the word I got was they're not even doing that during COVID uh right now, because it has to be an in-person thing. So, you know, and their fee, I don't know if I said it, their fee was $10, which is very low. Um, but I don't really, you know, what, we did the one ceremony here. It was for a non-Utica resident, for a Shelby Township resident. Uh, we had everything ready for them. We opened up City Hall on a Saturday afternoon. Uh, you know, had everything ready. Uh, we had everything ready for them. We opened up City Hall on a Saturday afternoon, uh, you know, had everything ready for them. It was quite a different experience, I would imagine, than the county courthouse. Does that answer your question, Councilman Ryan?
Uh, yes, it does.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, that was a motion by Deion and support by Socora, I believe. If there's no further questions, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Socora.
Yes.
Renzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Yerkeel Andreno.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Uh, next item from Mayor's office, uh, we did have a noise complaint, uh, from a business on Hall Road. Their dumpster was being emptied, uh, per the resident, like four AM to four-thirty PM. In discussion with our building inspector, we don't have a clear-cut ordinance that talks about, you know, times that are allowed for, you know, when, uh, general construction noise is allowed, and, and also including like noise such as dumpsters. So I did talk to, uh, the city attorney about this, and she is, uh, beginning to do some research on how other cities are handling it. I know she did present me with, uh, some preliminary information, so there's no motion required tonight. Uh, I just wanted to make council members aware that, uh, we don't have a real clear ordinance that we can enforce as far as, uh, noise in the city, and we're looking into that. So we'll probably be presenting something fairly soon of that. City Attorney, I know, uh, you're going to have your part in the meeting, but is there anything you would like to add to that while we're on this topic?
No, no. In fact, I actually, uh, gave my assistant some information to start typing up today, so you should.
And then the next, uh, business for my, for me is to reappoint a planning commission, uh, member. Mr. Tom Glasgow has, uh, it's been a pleasure watching him on Planning Commission. He always knows the right questions to ask, and he always likes to go share a beer after the meetings, unless it's Lent, uh, which we know that he doesn't drink during Lent, uh, so we always have to wait for that. But his term is up, and he made it aware to me that he would like to be reappointed, so I would like, uh, I would be asking for a motion to reappoint Mr. Tom Glasgow to the Planning Commission for a four-year term.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to, uh, reappoint Mr. Glasgow to a four-year term on, uh, on the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Councilman O'Donnell, support?
Support.
Support.
Oh, I think Councilman Trenz beat you to that one, Ken. Any discussion?
Uh, you said he likes beer, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, he's got, he's got my vote. I like this guy. Sounds great. Oh, yeah.
There's no further questions, a roll call vote, please.
Um, sorry. Socora.
Yes.
Renzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Yerkeel Andreno.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations, Mr. Glasgow. Uh, I will ask the Planning Commission Chairman to begin pronouncing your name with the A, not the I, now that you're in a new term.
Thanks, Glasgow. Yours, Mr. Glasgow.
Uh, that is all for my portion of the meeting. Um, I would like to open it up to any other council members that have any comments, that they would like to, Mayor Pro Tim Socora.
This is on a very personal note. It's nothing to do with City Council, but this weekend, I found out that Emily and I would be grandparents for a third time. My son and daughter of Japan are expecting, so I am ecstatic.
Woo!
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Woo-hoo! Oh, I'm so happy for you. Congratulations.
I'll be going to Japan sometime, whenever I can get there, even if I had to do the backstroke. I'm going to.
When's baby due?
Uh, August seventeenth.
Oh, very cool.
Perfect.
Hopefully, it'll be, you, the restrictions will be lifted by then.
I hope so.
Oh, yay for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tim. Any other council members?
Mr. Calendron, or Mayor Calendron, sir?
Yes, Councilman Deion.
So, um, w- we placed money in the budget for, uh, entertainment for the summer venue, and, um, you and I have had lengthy discussions about allowing me to support, continue to support the summertime events. I think the title was the Fundzar. It's the official title, and I would like to continue, uh, that role and be able to, um, to work towards booking our entertainment for our music in the weekends, uh, at Memorial Park. In addition to that, I'd like to look into still allowing, as allowed by law, the food truck rallies, should those be able to, uh, come back as well. So, um, I know you and I have been in conversation of it, and I think that, uh, I'd like to have support from council eventually, maybe on the next agenda, um, to get this to, um, calm down Alexa. On the next agenda, uh, to put it into so that we can allocate the funds to use for those purposes. And I've been in contact with several artists already who've reached out, and they're excited about doing it, and I'm hoping that council will support the idea of being able to, uh, bring music in the park on the weekends, uh, in twenty-twenty-one.
Very good. Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilman Deion. Any other council members? I know, uh, Councilman Ryan, if I could mention your park sign, uh, word?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, if you, if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, Councilman Ryan, uh, did some preliminary work on, uh, safety issues in our parks. Uh, our initial, I, we, Councilman Ryan brought the ordinance to me, and we read it, and there's really not a easy way to enforce, uh, after-hours activities at the park right now, because the ordinance basically reads, uh, you can't, you can only attend the parks during posted hours, is the way the ordinance reads, and unfortunately, there is no posted hours except for Grant Park, uh, and that most signs are at the basketball courts. So Councilman Ryan and I both attended the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, talked to them a little bit. Uh, and then at our monthly department head meeting, I brought it up again, and, uh, DPW Superintendent, Superintendent Bill Lang brought it to my attention that there was some work done on this previously, like several months ago, even last year, and there were some signs printed up that read, uh, park hours, I believe it said six AM to ten PM. And I believe there are six of those signs already printed, or, you know, produced. Um, so I think, Councilman Ryan, did you, did you get with the Parks and Rec Committee and let them know about that, or?
Um, no, I have not. Uh, the last thing that I heard was that the signs were printed. Uh, I'm not sure when the, their next Parks and Rec meeting was. I know it's going to be presented to them, because they were still discussing whether they want, wanted the hours to be, uh, the six AM to ten, or they wanted the dusk to dawn. I know that was brought into question as far as the exact hours.
So, yeah, it's kind of up in the air right now. I guess we're waiting to hear from Parks and Rec if they want to proceed with the six to ten hours or dusk to dawn, and, you know, if they're going to use those existing signs. So I think this is kind of the holding pattern for now until we hear back from Parks and Rec. Would you agree with that, Councilman Ryan?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Deion.
So if I might, um, I'm of the, of the opinion that the park should be, uh, from dawn to dusk. Uh, that satisfies most hours, um, that the parks are actually being used anyways. That if people, if it turns dark at nine o'clock at night in the middle of June, that's fine, then parks should vacate, because most people are ending their evening time activities, uh, when the lights, you know, when the lights start to come out of the parks, which also is another idea. We don't really need to light up our parks at night. The basketball court, we get several complaints about people using the basketball courts, uh, later on hours, you know, like ten, you know, eight, nine, ten o'clock. Well, I should say, more, closer around ten o'clock, we get people complaining. Um, I think that park hours, my personal opinion, would be best if we just did it from dawn to dusk, and that satisfies most, uh, usage anyways, I think.
And I, I agree with you, uh, Councilman Deion, regarding that. Um, the dawn to dusk is common across a lot of other different cities. Um, that's pretty standard. Um, I don't know if it would, something that we want to consider as far as changing the ordinance, where it goes from, where it says posted park hours, to something where it's a little bit more concrete and specific.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Absolutely.
I, I think I researched this when we had our department head meeting and determined that it's the Parks and Recs Board that determines hours, as I recall.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, and that's why I'm suggesting we kind of put in a holding pattern until we hear from Parks and Rec what their guidance is. But that, that's how I read the ordinance as well, that this would be under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Rec Committee to recommend what they believe the hours should be. Of course, you know, if it's a public safety issuer, I'm sure they would be willing, you know, to discuss it if, if needed, but I think we should wait to hear what, what they determine at this point.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'm a member of the Parks and Rec Committee also. Our next meeting is the eighteenth of this month. Our, uh, concern, we liked the dusk till dawn. Uh, however, at Grant Park specifically, there are lights that people can turn on to use the basketball courts, and so that's where there needs to be a specific time that they need to stop playing basketball. Otherwise, why do we have lights there that they can turn on to play? So I guess that's what our issue was at, with Parks and Rec, as far as the, the ordinance and the signage.
Right. I, I think the other issue that, I, I have a question, too. If we went dawn to dusk, that would mean that people could play basketball in the summertime, you know, it gets, dawn is like before six AM. Um, I think some of those neighbors would not appreciate, you know, having basketball happening at, you know, six AM or even earlier in the summer. But again, I, I'm willing to hear, you know, what Parks and Rec, uh, what their direction is.
This would apply to all parks, correct?
Yeah.
So I think another, uh, sort of the opposite use case might be, um, the, uh, what's that called? The, the dance, not studio, but, uh, um, that, uh, the dance business, they do, oftentimes, the, they'll go to, uh, Memorial Park, uh, JKN, pardon me, and they will, um, dance like eleven, eleven-thirty at night. I mean, is, are we really going to call the police and kick them out because they're, you know, they're, you know, but I, I don't know. I think that's another sort of non, uh, I guess, non-nuance sort of thing where, you know, hey, if they're there at ten PM, are we really going to take them out because it's not dawned?
The ordinance also states, it also states, uh, usage of the park is allowed, you know, during posted hours, or as permission is granted from the Parks and Rec Committee, if I'm not mistaken. Something to that effect.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, um, in, in, starting to conclusion, I can probably attest to this, um, people aren't not playing basketball in the, in the basketball courts because the hours are marked as too early. They're just not, kids don't wake up that early to play basketball. I mean, I can say that Matt's probably never been on a police run to go stop those pesky kids from playing basketball at seven, six o'clock in the morning. If anything, it's going to be later on at night, so the, the posting of hours doesn't stop people from doing it. It, what it does is gives the police the ability to enforce it. So I think a dusk to dawn, um, I'm sorry, dawn to dusk is, is real and enforceable, um, because it's measured time also. You can call dispatch, say what time did the sunset? You can ask your smartphone, what time did the sunset today? And that's enforceable. They do it in the, on the, on the water, too, in marine divisions. Matt probably knows, too. But if you start putting times on there, um, I, I think you start putting people into, uh, you know, pigeonhole people in a particular area. Um, it is enforceable if you do dawn to dusk. Um, but the other part, too, is the police aren't, you know, stopping people from doing this. They're only reacting, one, when there's a complaint, and two, um, when, two, they got lost. They lost that point. Um, but Matt, can, can you, I mean, give us the, uh, in your experience with that?
Uh, yes, absolutely, uh, Councilman Deion. Um, you know, when Parks and Rec had, had reached out to me and, and, and trying to look for the police department's kind of idea, and, and and my suggestion was the, the dawn to dusk. And I know one, one of the things that was brought up from the department head meeting was, while there may not be basketball in the morning, but what we do have is, is there are people that, that do walk in the park in the morning and stuff, so if you have specific hours, that, that may, that may limit them, but a lot of times you'll, you'll have people on walking at early hours in, in the morning and stuff. So, um, the changing of the ordinance really just, just helps us have, have a solid foothold, and if there is a violation and, and stuff to respond to.
But if we had, and again, I'm willing to wait to hear what Parks and Rec says, but if we did get a complaint, because we've had complaints from a resident that lives right across from Grant Park, that they were playing basketball too early. And if our ordinance, or the signs read, you know, per the ordinance, dawn till dusk, and the resident, and the resident complains because basketball's happening at six AM and it's sunny out, that's not really enforceable at that point, then, right? So, I guess I'd.
No, no, you, uh, Mayor, you're, you're absolutely correct. Um, I mean, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware. I, I know in, in all the, in, in my experience responding to complaints specifically regarding the basketball court, they're all, they're all in, in the nighttime hours. They're all the, the after-hours complaints and stuff. Um, I'm, I'm not directly familiar with, you know, responding to six AM or seven AM calls at, at the basketball court. I'm not saying that it, that it hasn't happened or can't happen, but I know our, our larger issues deal with the, the nighttime hours, and then specifically with them turning the lights on and getting into the ten, eleven o'clock hours.
All right. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Socora. Uh, you're on mute.
I'm a little naive. The people that play have the ability to turn the lights on and off? I mean, there's an actual switch they can turn them on, or are they on a timer that we set to ten o'clock or six o'clock or? Because if they can keep on hitting that, that thing, we're asking them to keep on abusing the time, timeframe. If it's on a timer, whether it's on an atomic clock and it's a dusk to dawn thing, or if it's, okay, in the summertime, it's going to be ten o'clock, um, then the lights kind of dictate, if the lights go off, guess what? It's time to go home. But if they can turn the lights on, we're, we're kind of asking for trouble. I, I didn't know they had the ability to turn them on.
Right, so the, the lights at Grant Park are on a master timer. Uh, the master timer dictates the maximum, uh, time of day that the lights can be turned on. There, so there are, there are switches on the exterior of the, uh, comfort station that affords us the ability to have the players turn the lights on rather than just having them on all the time. We did that to save money. Um, and then the master timer shuts off at ten o'clock, and the lights can't go on after ten o'clock. And it can be adjusted.
Thank you for that.
Ever. We can adjust those lights to not come on at all, or dictate exactly when they can come on or be turned off, if that makes sense.
It, it makes a lot of sense, thank you, because that still gives us control of those lights. I did not know that existed either, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other comments, we're going to move on. Uh, next would be comments from Planning Commission. Uh, we do have Mr. Glasgow here. Do you have any comments for us, Mr. Glasgow? You are on mute. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is Mr. Brusa from the Assessing Office. Mr. Brusa, you are on mute as well.
Yep. Uh, good evening. How are you? Yeah, I'm presenting, uh, the, this is the poverty application, or the guidelines to the poverty application. They asked to be presented to council for their approval. And there's two, uh, changes that have occurred this year, uh, by the state tax commission. One is the application itself has changed. Uh, now it's a state form that, uh, every community has to follow this new state form. Uh, it's no longer, um, created by each individual community. It, it basically simplifies everything. Uh, the second, uh, change is that the board review cannot deviate from the, uh, guidelines. Um, they made a. Um, they made a change where if you fall within a specific income level, um, and that's on page two of the guidelines. In page five of the guidelines, it shows the federal poverty income standards. And if you fall within a certain range of that income threshold, uh, you get a twenty-five percent reduction in your property taxes. The second range is a fifty percent reduction and the third range is a hundred percent reduction. Uh, in the past, the border review can deviate and they can basically decide any percentage of reduction, even if you are above the federal poverty income level for any one of the, uh, family size or each family unit size. Um, the border review can deviate and they can make an adjustment to whatever percentage they wanted. Uh, the State Tax Commission has decided to just basically give the board either, you know, you have the ability to reduce the property taxes by twenty-five percent, fifty percent, or a hundred percent, based on where you fall within that, uh, threshold of the income, um, level. And each year, the guidelines have to be presented to council for their approval. Um, basically, it's after this year, it's basically, it's gonna be the, uh, the federal income levels that have to be approved. I don't think the guidelines are gonna change, uh, going forward. Uh, it's, it's pretty standard now. Uh, it's, it's more of a simple way to review the, um, you know, the, uh, homeowner's application and the homeowner's, uh, eligibility for, uh, property tax relief.
Great, thank you, Mr. Brusa. Uh, do any council members have questions? If there's no questions, we would be looking for a motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-one poverty exemption guidelines.
So, uh, support, Mr. Mayor.
A motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilman O'Donnell. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey? O'Donnell?
Yes.
DeN? DeN?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Brusa.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is Building. Uh, Building Inspector Jerry Hicks, does not look like he's on the call tonight. Next on the agenda is Library. Ms. Dagan, did you have anything you'd like to present to council tonight?
I just have some informational tidbits. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for our allotment from the CDGB. I really, we really appreciate that and our patrons will as well. And I wanted to remind our viewers that even though you can't come into the library, we are open for curbside service. So you can call us, you can tell us the books or DVDs or materials that you want. We will gladly check them out to you, bring them to the door. It's a, it's a no-contact operation. We'll put them on a table, you can pick them up from the table. And to let people know, because our library has a lot of people who like to browse. Um, and I know it's hardest on those individuals because they wanna see what we have and what's new. So you can't browse right now, but we'll browse for you. So if you don't know what you want, just give us a call, let us guide you through, let us help you pick out something and, uh, and let us pick it out and check it out to you so you're not, uh, doing without any materials that you want. Also, uh, let residents know that federal taxes are in at the library. We have not received state yet. They usually come about the middle of the month, so I'm looking for those next week. So the forms are there. Once again, if you call us, we'll get them together for you, meet you at the door and hand them to you. And I wanna make one little plug for our hotspot. Our hotspot is, uh, a device that allows you to pick up internet from home. You would have wireless from wherever you go that it can pick a signal from. And it will service up to eight devices at a time. It checks out for two weeks. It's available only to Utica residents. We do not share it with other libraries in the communities. And, uh, if you're, if you don't have wireless at home or if you're going on a trip or if you, if your wireless is spotty, then, uh, do, call us. You can check out the, the hotspot and, uh, that'll solve some of your problems, we hope. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dagan. Any questions for Ms. Dagan tonight? Very well. And Ms. Dagan, if you'd like, you can be excused if we appreciated, uh, all the information you presented us. If you'd like to get home early.
I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next is, uh, Chief Willsack with the report from the Fire Department.
Good evening, uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Um, before you, uh, have a, uh, collection agency settlement, um, for an annual service fee of eighty, thirty-four dollars and nine cents, including the attorney's fees. Uh, and they wanna settle for six hundred dollars. And, uh, this has already been through some legal areas and if we get an attorney involved, it's gonna wind up costing us some more. So I would suggest that we make a settlement offer and I would do a motion for that, to settle for six hundred dollars.
We need to hear from a motion to accept a settlement of six hundred dollars.
Yes.
Council, do, is, would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, motion by Councilwoman Terrencey, do we have support? Support by Sikora.
Support.
Mayor Protem Sikora. Uh, any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Would you, uh, you have a comment before we do a roll call?
I was just gonna say Chief Willsack, he called me today, um, being on the fire board and we discussed it. And you never like to lose money, but if we truly can get the six hundred dollars collected, the loss of a hundred and seventy-six dollars is well above trying to fight it with an attorney, so.
Any other discussion or comments from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
DeN?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. And Chief, are you, uh, it looks like you might be frozen. I think maybe Chief's having, uh, technical issues. I know there was a second part of his motion, if you look at the Agenda Item Summary Form, uh, in discussions with, uh, Chief Willsack and the Treasurer, uh, right now...
I don't know, can you hear me?
Yep, I think we can hear you now, Chief. Chief, can you hear us? But a second motion was being requested after discussions with Fire Chief Willsack, myself and the Treasurer. Uh, we don't really have a, uh, any authorization to reach into these types of agreements for settlement. After discussing it, we...
Am I there?
Yeah, I don't think we're getting you, Chief.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Chief.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We, yes, we can, Chief, we can hear you. I was just discussing the, the second motion for you because I thought we lost you. So a recommendation we had from the Treasurer was perhaps, right now, the mayor, uh, is authorized for purchases up to twenty-five hundred dollars. So we thought it might be appropriate to also allow, uh, these types of settlements with collection agencies up to twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, not to exceed that amount. Uh, and if council was agreeable to that, then we would need a motion, uh, to adopt that policy. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Yeah, but I don't know if I got Wi-Fi problems or no, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Chief. Would anyone on council like to make that motion?
I did.
Okay, motion by, uh, Mayor Protem Sikora.
I'll support it.
Support by Councilwoman Terrencey. Any further discussion? Okay, it looks like not. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
DeN?
He's on mute.
He is on mute. DeN? You there?
Sorry, yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Tom Gianni, calling now.
I texted, Chief told his audio and video is bad.
All right, I think we're gonna move on because I, Chief Willsack's having technical issues, but I believe that's all he had tonight.
I har- I hardly noticed.
Oh, pardon the wacky.
Just might wanna mute his mic. I mean, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know if it's gonna let me, it's saying ask to mute.
Can you jump in on that and tell him we hired? See if so.
All right, let's try to move on, uh, Police Sergeant Kaluzny.
I, I think that, I think the chief wants, uh, to mention about the new hires. I'll step in for him because he, uh, has some, uh, issues.
Absolutely.
Uh, we, we, yep, so, uh, we, we just, uh, the Fire Department just recently swore in, uh, three, um, new hires. Um, they're gonna bring some excellent experience. Um, all three of them have prior experience. Two of them are paramedic onlys and one of them is a paramedic firefighter. Uh, there, the names are Sarah Miller, who's a paramedic. Uh, Ray Van Hebbel, which is a paramedic, and Kyle Coopers, who's a, uh, paramedic firefighter.
Thank you, Councilman Ryan. Yes, I actually had the pleasure of, uh, swearing them in, uh, last Thursday. They seemed like a great group of people and, uh, we're lucky to have them. Thanks again. Um, Chief Willsack, uh, last call. I think we're good to move forward.
Well, we also have a, uh, we had a promotion, uh, Fred Gibson to lieutenant.
Right. Yeah, I, and we haven't done his swearing in yet, but I look forward to, uh, doing that very soon, Chief. So when, when he's available, please let me know and, and we'll get that done right away.
Okay. That's it, first, we're al- we're also ready to grant, if you can hear me. Um, we're in the process of writing a grant for a new aerial truck. Hopefully, it'll be successful and, uh, possibly replace our generator at the station. That's all I have.
Great, and we, and we did hear you, Chief, so that, that worked out great, thank you. Uh, moving on to Police Sergeant Kaluzny.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, there's two items that I, I put in your package there, I'm gonna kinda go over those real quick. The, uh, first one deals with the budget amendment for the Fund Two-Sixty-Five, which is our drug enforcement fund, and Fund Two-Twelve, which is our liquor control fund. Uh, these two funds are specific in terms of what the expenditures can be made from. Um, in preparing the, the fiscal year twenty-one budget, um, we were kinda looking at, at some alternative means to, to draw from these funds to, uh, look at, at kinda offsetting some other costs and stuff. And, uh, with, with those issues in the budget, that kinda fell through. Um, one thing that, that we've always funded out of these funds is, is what's called LexisNexis. And our detective uses that program on investigative purposes, um, almost on a, on a daily basis. So what I'm, what I'm asking for is a, just a, a budget amendment to be able to, to pay the bills for LexisNexis, um, from specifically the Drug Enforcement Fund and the Liquor Control Fund. Uh, the money within these funds far supports the amount that I'm asking for to, uh, fund the cost of the program. Is there, is there any questions on this amendment?
A question?
Yes.
Officer Kaluzny, I was, um, when I looked at this, is this an annual fee or, um, is, uh, is this for one year? Or for how long it's the term?
Yep, it's, it, it's a subscription-based, based program. So, um, it's, it's, it's roughly about two hundred dollars a month is, is what they charge. So I'm, I'm splitting it between the, the two accounts. Um, it does, just like every other subscription program, have tend to, you know, every year have, have auxiliary costs that, that seem to kinda go up and up and stuff. But it is, it is a, a rolling, uh, subscription service.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we would need a motion.
A motion?
I'll support it.
Motion by Councilman Ryan, I believe, and support by Mayor Protem Sikora. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey? O'Donnell?
Yes.
DeN?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you, everybody.
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you. Um, the second amendment that I have for you deals with our miscellaneous employee benefits section. Um, I kinda, kinda outlined in there, um, what it, what had happened. There were, there were two draws that, that came out of the, the fund there. And so what I'm asking for is, is kinda to be able to, to bring my miscellaneous benefits back up for these, these two auxiliary costs. The, um, the, the cost for the, uh, the union bonus and the other, the other auxiliary cost there was, was something that obviously when we're creating our budget, we weren't anticipating those costs to come out of that line item. So I just wanna make sure that our, our budget stays in track as, as we're moving through the year. Is there any, any questions on the, uh, the amendment that I have posted?
Question for you, the funds putting back into there, is that coming from general fund or where are those funds coming from?
Uh, yes, in, in, in talking from, with the, with the Treasurer, um, he, he specified that that comes from the, the unassigned fund balance.
And these were items that council previously approved. Uh, unfortunately, we did not at the time, uh, set up, you know, what a council they were come, that funding was gonna come from and go to. The one was money from the CARES Act, uh, the grant that we received, uh, you know, that went to the general fund and that's what, I believe that's what Sergeant Kaluzny's asking for, is to move that money from the general fund to the correct funds at this point. Uh, and it is listed on the Agenda Item Summary under Suggested Action. Are there any further questions? If not, we would need a motion.
Take them up.
Was that Councilman Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Uh, motion by Councilman Ryan, support. By Mayor Protem Sikora. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey? O'Donnell?
Yes.
DeN?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. And I wanted to mention, uh, Sergeant Kaluzny, thank you very much for being proactive and starting the traffic study. Uh, after our first department head meeting, you took like immediate action on, on that request and I really appreciate it. I think the residents will too, once, uh, we get the report back from you and, and determine, you know, what corrective actions are needed. I, I think this is a real benefit to the residents, so thank you.
All right, you're, you're welcome, Mayor.
Uh, is that all you had tonight, Sergeant Kaluzny?
Um, just a, just a real quick recap and, uh, I'll, I'll be very brief here. Um, I just wanna advise the, the Mayor and Council that, that we also did have a new hire. We heard a new part-time dispatcher. Um, she comes from having fourteen years' experience at Warren. She's been with us now for about two weeks and seems to be very, very good fit and, and very positive and stuff. And, and something, our, our part-time program's been a real good complement to our, uh, our dispatchers and stuff. Um, so, on that, we, we've also been doing some, some very tremendous upgrades to our, our dispatch center and stuff, and we've kinda had some, some issues, so, when we're done with COVID, it'd be nice to have everybody come in and, and kinda see the, the renovations and, and all the, the new advancements, it's, it's quite amazing in there, all the, uh, new equipment and stuff that they have. So, other than that, we're, we're all set at the police department, so thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Kuzni. Uh, moving to DPW, Mr. Lang.
Yes. Mayor and council, uh, you should have in your packet a, uh, a proposal from Public Roth and Clark to, um, prepare a, uh, a study to include a high-level preliminary budgetary costs associated with road improvements, uh, the utility, projected utility improvements that came up in the SAW grant, as well as a gap analysis for the, um, our sidewalks in the city, and, um, we had a meeting with HRC, myself, the mayor, uh, Mayor Calendino, and, and Phil Patanaster, and out of that meeting was, uh, to, um, get a cost estimate so that we could look to move forward on, um, the prospect of repairing the roads and utilities and addressing, uh, high priority sidewalk gaps. So, uh, with that, uh, their proposal was, uh, $12,600, which, um, I'm asking for, uh, a, a motion to approve that, uh, that, uh, uh, proposal so that HRC can move forward. We're, we're on a, uh, for this project, we're on a little bit of a timeline, we'd like to have everything in place, uh, for the November election, um, we've got, uh, road bonds that are gonna mature and, and, um, become, uh, well, I don't wanna say obsolete, they're gonna, they're gonna reach their maturity, and we're looking to potentially utilize, um, a renewal of the road bond, plus some additional costs that more than likely will come out of, uh, uh, of, of road funding needs, so. With that, the, the, uh, asked for a motion to approve the line item is 101-441-821-000. Or any questions?
So this-
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, sorry, Ken, the, so this is, we're getting the, uh, high level, um, just because I wanna be totally clear, it's a lot of money, right, so, um, current road conditions, we have a high-level budgetary estimate, uh, incorporating utility repairs, as well as sidewalk gap review, but they're not doing, uh, designs for the improvements, um, and then the budgetary estimates are basically, so I'm just reading this cover sheet here. Uh, so this would be my understanding, am I correct, that this is, uh, they're gonna take essentially how our roads look today and say, hey, how much would it cost to replace them? I mean, are they gonna give, uh, is there like a schedule of when they would need to be replaced, are they looking at conditions for any of that? Just trying to understand the, the scope a little better.
So, right, good question, so what we would do, um, prioritize worst first, um, look at those costs, look at replacing, you know, uh, get preliminary estimates for those, as well as like a rolling scope of where we would go year after year, or different, um, different options that we can consider as to how it is that we're going to, uh, rebuild the roads, as well as address the utilities and, and sidewalks, so. That's the goal, is to, uh, have some, maybe some different choices, or, uh, of course, money's gonna dictate what we can do in the end, but that their goal is to put together, take a look at everything, and have a, uh, a comprehensive, uh, suggestion as to how we can move forward, and costs associated with that, so that, um, we can look at options for bonding, and some other, uh, other things that would be necessary to move forward, um, with those repairs.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lang.
Any other questions for Mr. Lang? If not, we'd be looking for, uh, the first motion he requested. Mayor Protim Socora.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Socora.
Socora, I'll support that.
Support by Councilman O'Donnell. Any further questions? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terenzi. Sorry, Faith, I didn't hear-
Yes, sorry.
Uh, O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Calendino?
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is our treasurer, Mr. Patanaster.
No, no, we need, we have another, uh,
Oh, you're right, right.
There's another motion that needs to be taken care of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Trying to speed things too fast, go right ahead, Mr. Lang, thank you.
That's okay, um, so, in addition to that, we, we need a motion to amend that same line item, uh, in the amount of the $12,600. Um, those funds unfortunately would have to come from the general fund, um, and, uh, just for clarity, I happened to ask, uh, Mr. Patanaster, uh, why we wouldn't look to use like local and, and, uh, major street funds, and, um, by Mr. Patanaster's explanation, we, we can't use those dollars for preliminary costs, that they can only be used for like actual design engineering and construction, if I'm, if I'm, uh, understanding him correctly.
Yep.
So, that's the, that's the purpose of why we, um, we would need, uh, a budget amendment from the general fund to offset the costs in that engineering line item of, uh, 101-441-821-000.
I'll make the motion that we do the budget amendment as stated.
Motion by Terenzi.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protim Socora. Any further discussion? Uh, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yen.
Yes.
Ryan. Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, thank you, everybody, thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you, good things are gonna happen here.
Absolutely. Next on the agenda is Mr. Patanaster with the treasurer's report.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council, you have in your packet, uh, a statement of revenues and expenditures for the governmental funds and the, uh, sewer and water fund, uh, as of December 31st, 2020. A- as of that time, uh, we were 50% of our, uh, budget year complete. Uh, in the general fund, we had collected 83% of our revenues, uh, and expended 54% of our budgeted expenditures, um. The, i- i- unless there are any questions, I will, uh, just suggest that, uh, you receive and file these reports, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
If there's no questions, we would need a motion to receive and file.
Done, moved.
Councilman Terenzi and-
Support.
Support from Mayor Protim Socora. Roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yen.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Was that it, Mr. Patanaster?
Uh, that is all, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the clerk's office. Ms. Lori Clerk.
Lori Clerk. Uh, thank you, mayor and council, uh, I have submitted a estimate from SYO Computer Engineering Services for, um, anti-malware software at City Hall. It's already installed at the police department, um, it is for a three-year subscription, uh, for the software for all 10 of our workstations at City Hall. Any questions? So I would need a motion to amend fiscal year 2021, the general fund and the building code enforcement fund budgets increasing by $720 in accounts 101-000-695-080, and 101-215-731-010, um, increasing by, uh, $240 to account 249-216-731-010.
Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion.
Ah.
Uh, anybody support?
Support.
Motion by Calendino, support by Deion. If there's no further discussion, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terenzi.
Yes, sorry.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yen.
Yes.
Ryan. Ryan, you're muted.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes.
Thank you.
Was that everything tonight, uh, Madam Clerk?
From my office.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, parks and rec, we don't have anyone providing reports tonight, same for the historic district commission. That brings us to our city attorney, Ms. Linda McGrail.
Thank you, mayor and council, in your packet, you should have a, um, city clerk contract, basically capturing what the, uh, agreement is between our new city clerk and the city of Utica, um, there are a couple of spots in there, after consultation with MERS, you know, as you know, we're moving away from a, we had discussions about moving away from a defined benefit, uh, plan. Uh, to do so, we need to find out with regard to the defined contribution, what exactly the city will be contributing versus what the employer will be contributing. So, that's why we've added the sections, even though I think Mr. Patanaster probably had more of the dealings and workings with MERS under A and B, uh, we need to determine what the contribution is gonna be of the city and employee with regards to the healthcare savings plan, which is being offered as opposed to retiree healthcare benefits, and then under B, what the respective contributions are gonna be with regard to the DC plan, and then those numbers will then be, um, put into the clerk's contract.
Any questions from council? I know in consultation with our labor counsel, Howard Schiffman, uh, he did provide, uh, his recommendations for what those values should be. For the HSA, he recommended an employer contribution of 2% and an employee contribution of 2%. Uh, and for the defined contribution plan, he recommended an employer contribution in the range of 5% to 7% with an employee contribution, and these are his words, in the area of 5%.
So council needs to determine what-
Something we're to-
-want to offer, so that that can be plugged into with regards to A, B, and C of the agenda items there.
Is that something we're doing right now, or is it something with contracts that we do in closed session, I, I'm asking?
It's, it's an open session agenda item, because it's, it's not a employee personnel review, but it is kind of, and which is still open to open meetings yet.
Um, you want me to add my two cents, I would agree with, um, Mr. Schiffman on the MERS 2 and 2 for the healthcare savings plan, um, as far as the defined contribution, which is actually the retirement plan, um. I know in some of the private sector, it's six and a half to seven, um, and that's, that's the high end, a lot of them are at the five, um, the employee, I do feel is the 5%. Um, I know on the union contracts, they have to, um, kick in on theirs, so I would be happy with 5 to 6 on the employer end, um, but that's also up to everybody else.
And keep in mind, this is gonna be what we're offering, um, the city clerk, but it will be any future administrators as well, you, you can't pick and choose among employees you're offering.
I understand that, I, I, there, there's a precedent being set.
Yep.
And, and the thing that, um, we discovered in talking to MERS, who would be administering these programs, is these are set numbers, right, we cannot change these, once they're set for this plan, they're in place. Uh, I know different plans, different companies allow employers or employees to change that percentage, but that will not be the case with these, and it's not the city, because of the city, it's MERS who's administering the plan, it's that, that is their rule.
And I, I believe, Mr. Patanaster, if you could also comment on it, as I see the, um, agenda item summary with regard to the MERS plans, we need to have a supplemental valuation done, and that, I believe that needs to be done before it's formally approved, correct? We can preliminary approve the actual numbers, and then, um, have the valuation done, and then would it come back to council in March?
Uh, that is correct, the reason for the supplemental valuation is that with MERS, we are carving out of an existing de- defined benefit plan, the APSME general plan, we're carving out the administrator roles that were previously included in that plan. In order to carve them out, it results in a change of the actuarial calculations, uh, for that defined benefit plan. So, MERS requires that we have a supplemental valuation to determine the impact to that defined benefit plan before they can go ahead and carve out those employees, th- those prospective employees. Then what they'll do after we get this, uh, supplemental valuation is, they will roll out the, they will carve out the roles, put them into a new plan that will be this defined benefit plan, I mean defined contribution plan. Now, the defined contribution plan doesn't require the supplemental valuation, it's to determine what the impact is on the-
Right.
APSME general DB plan. Um, so yes, once that is done, uh, we would have to approve the changes in contribution rates to the old defined benefit APSME general plan. Uh, it was not stated to me that we would have to come back and approve, um, the terms of the DC plan, rather, we're telling them tonight, these are the terms of the DC plan that we want you to develop, and once they've done the adjustments to the DB plan, they will send us the plan agreement for the DC plan, which will then have to be approved at the March council meeting. I hope I didn't confuse you.
So I would recommend that council could, um, make a motion to adopt the city clerk contract, subject to final determinations with these plans. And then, uh, I, I, I think I'm hearing pretty universally that with regards to the HSA, we're talking about a 2 and 2, um, so we could, uh, a- approve that, and then we could make a motion to approve the valuation and, uh, preliminary numbers with regard to the employer or employee contributions are gonna be. I do it in three different motions. I do it in three different motions. The easiest is probably to adopt the city clerk contract subject to final determination is to the respective contributions from employer and employee on the HSA and the uh defined contribution plan.
We
So we're not bringing the numbers in?
Yeah, we're not doing that tonight.
I even want to see what the valuation is before it's formally plugged in.
Um, no, I, 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 we don't, we need to provide MERS with the contribution rates. Those contribution rates are not going to affect the DB plan. What's going to affect the DB plan is pulling prospective employees out of the
Pull anyone out of a DB plan until you actually have the actuarial and you can say you've seen the numbers and approved it.
Well, sure, but we still need to approve tonight what uh contribution rates to the DC and the HSA are going to be.
Cor- correct, but I don't think you can, I think you can approve that on a preliminary basis. But until you actually have the actuarial veri- uh values, you're not going to want to actually pull an employee out of that plan.
Sure.
But that would mean that you'd have to get values at, let's say, 5%, 5 and 1/2, 6%, 7%?
You, you, you don't need to, it's not so much the values, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Paternoster, it's not so mu- the actuarial is not going to depend so much on what you'd be paying under the new uh defined contribution plan, but the actuarial is what's going to happen with regard to your prior plan when you're pulling these new classifications out because you're not going to have people in the city contributing to it. It's going to affect what the city is going to have to contribute in the future because you don't, kind of like our social security system, you don't have a current employee feeding that system anymore.
That is, that is correct. You have reduced the potential pool of employees, of future employees who are going to be contributing into the system. And so in essence, um, by reducing the number of potential employees and the future dollars that will come into the system based strictly on percentage of pay, then it's going to drive the percent of pay up relative to that smaller pool of employees you cur- you will have in that plan.
I, I, I understand. I mean, by taking that position out, no matter what we define as or decide as the defined contribution amount, it's going to lose X amount of dollars, okay? But you're not going to bounce, I don't think you're going to make your choice on what you're going to pay this administrator or any in the future based on that. That's something we're going to have to eat until this works its way out of the system and we correct the problem.
I, I agree that you can determine on the amount, whether it be two and two or five and five or, or whatever it is. But I think um to properly exercise your fiduciary duties before formalizing pulling that out, y- you need to have the, you need to have an actuarial done before you do anything with regard to a plan.
So you're saying that we wouldn't make the change?
You may, you may say, you probably will, but I'm just saying, serving as a, in a fiduciary capacity, you, you need to have an actuarial done before you make any change to your current plan.
So we'll agree on that. I'm just saying is I think we should come up with what these rates are going to be instead of kicking the cane down the road.
Yeah. You formally vote, wait until next meeting when you know what the actuarial.
Okay.
So probably the first motion would be uh Mr. Paternoster to have the actua- authorize actuarial. Would that be the first motion?
Uh, yes.
I'll make the motion to authorize the actuarial.
I'll support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilwoman Torenzi. Any questions?
Uh, and then friendly amendment, it would be the corresponding motion to amend the F uh fiscal year 2021 general budget increasing by $400 with the account 101-299-808-010 actuarial valuation. I think you can do that one motion. So just for Sorry, for clarification on the agenda, we're talking about uh 14B and the uh, it was motion three on the agenda item summary, correct?
Correct.
Numbers two B and three combined into one motion, two and three. Okay, thank you. So we had a motion by Sikora and second by Torenzi.
That's right.
Correct? Okay, roll call.
We were open for discussion. Is there any questions from council? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
All right, Sikora.
Yes.
Renzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yen?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes.
And then the next, probably easiest, would to be tentatively to approve with regard to the corresponding um withholdings for the HSA. Um, I believe Mr. Schiffman has recommended two and two.
That's right.
I, I mean, I'm okay with that and I don't know if anyone else has thoughts, but I like the two and two and I actually like the five and five as well.
So was that a bu- was that a motion for the HSA two and two with council?
Yes, that sure was.
All right, any support?
Yeah.
Go by Torenzi? Any discussion? So right now, the motion is to adopt the two
Tentatively, ma'am. It should be tentatively because you, you don't want to take that action.
Right, based on the act, right. So this will be a tentative uh rate of 2% employer contribution and 2% employee contribution. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote.
Uh, Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yen?
Yes.
Ryan? Ryan?
He's on mute.
Yeah.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes.
And back to you, Ms. McGrail.
Then it would be to tentatively approve the uh corresponding contributions with regard to the DC plan. Again, tentatively till we have the actuarial.
So for, uh, this is a motion, I guess. For clarification, these are, and this is just me because I'm just some average, you know, I'm just some average schmuck, right? Trying to contextualize this in my head. This is, so we currently have a defined benefit plan. This would be a defined contribution plan. These are two, as far as, you know, us sending this money to MERS, these are two separate accounts, right? Like the, the decisions we make to one doesn't affect the other. We're essentially starting a fresh 401K type plan.
So they are separate plans. The way it's going to affect the prior plan is you're no longer going to have current employees from city clerk on contributing to that plan. So you're going to have to figure out what the city needs to be contributing just to maintain what they anticipate paying out, which is the purpose of the actuarial.
Gotcha.
As a comment, so in essence, there is going to be a time period that the city, call it savings on one end, are going to be eating up contributing to the original plan until you work the cycle through.
Right.
Once the cycle works through
Right.
in the future, then we solve the problem.
Yeah, with the hope in the long term, we are safe.
Right, yeah.
Looks like Mr. Paternoster has something.
I, I, I do want to clarify. We are not closing, we're not proposing to close the APSME general plan. We're only talking of, of carving out one employee classification, and that's the administrator roles. That would be your city clerk, a future treasurer, finance director, a future uh DPW superintendent, um, who that, those are the, the top level administrators that you're carving out. All of your union employees in the APSME and in the uh the administration would continue in that uh defined benefit plan. Uh, not closing, we're not closing the plan like we did the old general plan and the old APSME plan. We're just re- reducing the pool of potential employees.
So I, we don't have numbers, we, we need to decide, I guess, what numbers work. I gave everyone what Mr. Schiffman's suggestions were. Let me read it one more time. Uh, employer contribution in the area of 5 to 7% with an employee contribution in the area of 5%. So that was the guidance from labor council. Uh, what we're looking for right now is to set actual uh numbers for those parameters.
Tentatively.
What's that?
Tentit-
Tentatively, based upon the actuarial.
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
So to put it in terms, when you're basing it on the salary that has been proposed, um, at a 5% rate, that is a $2,500 contribution from the city into that fund. And as the salary adjusts, that number will adjust with it, or up to 7%, you're going to be a $3,500 contribution. Um, and again, precedent wise, whatever we pick is really going to then apply to anybody that's an administrator, okay? Fire chief, police chief, DPW, um, clerk, all those positions. So treasurer, so my original statement was 5 to 6%. Um, Brad, you expressed you were happy with five. Um, I also agree with the 5% employee contribution. Now it's up to everybody else to speak up.
I'm kind of with Ken that, you know, 5 to 6%. I'm kind of going the middle of the road because I hate to go, I just hate to go at the low end always. You know, this is someone's future and, and, and it's for all of our future employees as well. So I'm okay with 5 to 6.
Average 401K employer.
All properly in time that I was part of a defined um contribution plan. They usually were matching. And if I remember right, I think it was like 6% was part of the two different plans I was part of before. So, and I, I, I don't want to see us start shooting for that 5% and shooting us in the foot when it comes to future administrator. Because like you said, th- this is affecting a lot of positions, not just one. We're talking about all of our future department heads.
That's right.
The, I don't know if it uh means anything to you all, but the uh, I pulled up, I Googled it, pulled up a CNBC article. They said that the average employer 401K match reached 4.7%. This was in 2019. Um, so I guess 5% really is kind of at the low, the lower end.
You have to keep in mind
My employer was, was uh pretty good, turns out.
I mean, I think it's combined public employees to public employees though, not private, the private sector.
Right. I, I looked up on marketwatch.com and it did not specify if it was private industry or public. I'm guessing it was private. That number was actually four and a quarter percent. Uh, but again, I'm not sure how that correlates to uh public sector. And I can't find the
Comment. Uh, just part of the situation that has evolved is that the private sector and public sector benefit packages and stuff have reached Godzilla proportions of being night and day. And that's the legacy costs that are associated with it is what we're having to deal with. So the public sector eventually is going to have to come back to what the private sector is, okay? Plain and simple. You, you can't sustain it and that's what we're trying to correct and fix. So, um, that's all.
Well, we still need to come up with numbers. Um, do we, if somebody makes a motion for the numbers and we could, at that point, vote on it, I suppose.
Babe, you have uh, you have swung me. You know my uh, my, my soft, uh, my soft heart is always uh, it's always squishy. Um, I, I mean, I, I don't know, if you want to do, you know, 5 and 6% or I think 5 and 7 is quite generous, but Ken, I think you're right. I think you're on the right. Um, I think you're on the right when you're saying, you know, we need to make sure we're keeping our expectations in line with what not just the private sector is doing, but what the, the employer, the labor market is looking at. Um, so, yeah. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go 6% on the employer, 5% on the employee.
I'm second that.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any further discussion?
That was exactly what I was thinking, Ken.
Right minds think alike.
All right, if there's no further discussion, uh, ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Uh, Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yen? Sorry, Tom, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Uh, Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I will uh, I'll be listening. I'll be driving to work, so I'll be uh listening and responding, but uh audio or the video will be off.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank goodness.
So that would get us to a point, or I'm sorry, uh, city attorney, do you want to keep on with this? I think we still need to have a motion to approve the clerk's contract uh based on these tentative values. Is that how you, is that how you want to do that?
Yes.
So do I have a
Make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the clerk's tentative contract based on the values that we just voted on.
Support, anybody?
Support, support.
Uh, motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yen?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you Linda for helping us navigate that somewhat confusing.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything further? Uh, Ms. McGrail, is, would you, would you be able to discuss a little bit about the hydro pro situation? Where we're at with that?
Yeah, I mean, we're pursuing action in the court. I'm hoping to have a court date relatively soon, hopefully before our next um uh, meeting. I've had some discussions with Sergeant Kaluzny as to potential other avenues we may have to get that situation resolved. Um, you know, hopefully we have some better news for you, good news for you next month. But we're working hard on it.
Very good. I know I did, related, I did talk to the building inspector today and he is issuing tickets on a weekly basis now. Uh, and he's also in pretty constant contact with the folks over there too. So I think it's important that the business owners there know that the city can no longer, you know, turn a blind eye. Uh, we're doing our best to address the residents' concerns on that. So thank you very much. Um, anything else? Linda, is that everything?
That's everything.
Thank you so much. Uh, and that brings us to bills payable. I would need a motion to pay the bills that were presented in the package.
Bum moved.
Support.
Motion- Motion by Terrencey, support by Dian, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora?
Yes.
Renzi?
It looks like she's frozen.
Oh, maybe. Uh, Yen?
There she is.
Oh, babe, to pay the bills? Thank you. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yen?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you, everybody.
What? Oh.
At this point in the meeting, we open the floor to any residents that have communications for council. These would be, uh, communications on any item, not necessarily on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? I do see a few familiar names, and they are all muted. So if you want to make a comment and you're muted, please unmute yourself. Going once, going twice.
I think Phil has something.
Oh.
I, I'll just offer this real quick, because nobody else. Um, we are in the fabrication stages with the, uh, the bridge components for the Davis Street Bridge Tunnel. Just for an update, um, all the drawings were approved and the, the, you know, we are in, uh, fabricating stages. So the next week, you know, expect delivery and components put on, and we'll get the bridge back open. But maybe we'll get a little closer. It'll be spring, but we're moving along. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lang. All right. No further comments from the public. Uh, at this point in the meeting, uh, we will be going to closed session to discuss some legal issues, uh, related to our assessing. Uh, we will be coming back, but at that point, we will not be doing any further city business. Uh, we will be coming back just to adjourn the meeting. So anyone that would like to leave the meeting at this point, you are definitely excused. Uh, anyone from the, and that would be for city folks, including you, Mr. Lang, I see waving. Uh, for anyone from the public, you are more than welcome to stay on the call, but you'll be seeing a screen that says we're in closed session. And again, when we come back, uh, the only action on council will be to, uh, adjourn the meeting. So thank you, everybody, for all the hard work. Uh, much appreciated. And for those folks leaving us now, have a great night.
Have to go to another room or something like we did before?
Yeah, I have to break it out, and it's going to take me a couple seconds to do it.
Okay, um, sir, do we need a motion to, uh, leave the regular meeting?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to leave. I believe we'll need a motion to enter closed session, isn't that right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the, uh, session and enter into the executive session.
Motion by Dian?
Support.
Support by Socora. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Socora?
Yes.
Renzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yen?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. And I'm still trying to get everybody. One second. And here we go.